Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education for the Appleton Area School District. My name is Kay Eggerd. I'm Board President. And first, roll call of fellow Board members, starting with James Bacon.
Here.
Chris Sauter.
Here.
Deb Truman.
Here.
Jim Bowman.
Here.
Peng Tao.
Here.
Okay, and Board Member Ed Ruffalo is not able to join us tonight. So I'm going to ask for everyone to join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I just want to note, this is the first board meeting of the 2022-23 school year. It's even hard to say that. I know we're still in summer, but we are up and running. And also, first meeting with our new Superintendent, Mr. Greg Harchus. So this is awesome, and we're delighted that you are at the table here tonight. So it's great. Anyone who is joining us remotely, the materials for tonight's meeting can be found linked on Board Docs, which you can get to through the district website. And also, I do want to apologize, we did, are starting 10 minutes late. The Board did have a work session, and we completed that work a little bit late. So, but happy now that we are meeting and everyone is joining us. So on our agenda, I am going to ask if there are any requests to remove any of the consent agenda items for separate consideration for tonight. Okay, then see none. I will ask for approval of tonight's agenda as it is written.
So move.
Thank you, Pam. Thanks, James. Okay, any questions about this? Are there any, all in favor of tonight's agenda, as is? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. We do not have a special presentation tonight. So then, at this time, I'll move to public input. And we do have one speaker with us tonight who would like to address the Board. And I, just before we hear from our speaker, I just, a few reminders, and these would be highlights from Board Policy 187 and its rule. If an individual is speaking, the individual may have up to three minutes. An individual speaking on behalf of a group, and some of the members of the group are also present, then the speaker may have five minutes. We will have a timer running, so you can keep track of the allotted time. And we will adhere to the time limit, so that we are fair to all potential speakers. Any comments that would exceed the allotted time may be submitted to the Board in writing. The Board respectfully requests that speakers refrain from presenting comments that introduce complaints or concerns that are directed toward or identify individual staff members or individual students. As such, personnel-related and student-related matters implicate a variety of rights that require careful attention, the district has established alternative procedures for appropriately addressing such complaints. Generally, such complaints or concerns should be channeled through the district complaint procedure, which is outlined in Policy 870 and its rule. Any person with such complaint or concern may contact the Office of the Superintendent for information on the most appropriate means of raising or pursuing his or her complaint. If a speaker presents a complaint about an individual staff member or presents inappropriate information concerning individual students, the speaker will be directed that the remarks are not appropriate and that their opportunity to address the Board has concluded. Speaker retains all liability for his or her comments and conduct. Conduct that is disorderly or any speech that is obscene, threatening, harassing, or defamatory is not permitted. If a speaker is disorderly or uses speech that is obscene, threatening, or defamatory, the speaker will be directed that the remarks are not appropriate and that their opportunity to address the Board has concluded. And one, another point, the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law allows only brief discussion of topics that are not listed on the agenda. Therefore, we may not be able to fully address comments that are shared tonight. So with that, Ed Perkins has signed up to speak. So Ed, I'd like to welcome you. Yes, and the microphone, if there's a button that you can turn on. And I'll turn my mic off, so we can focus on you. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, it, your sheet says that you are speaking on behalf of a group?
The group is Education Advocates, per report, yes.
And some of the members are here?
Yes.
Okay. Five minutes. Okay, we'll just wait until we get the timer going. Thank you. There you go.
Now, it should be five minutes, not three.
Yep, we'll, we'll get it clarified.
Okay. I'll give her a break, so I don't start talking before I should. Okay, so I'd like to just say, to begin with, it's good to have a public meeting in the presence, face to face. So I'll just start by saying, once again, it's good that we can be together. COVID has not been the most welcoming, you know, oftentimes of chances for people to come together. I come to you tonight, and Mr. Harche, may I say, your first meeting, I do wish you well. You are a very important person in this community. Because in your hands, to some extent, lies the destiny of children. You are important. The Board also is important. Having said that, I come tonight with some questions, and I'm going to point to some issues. I believe it is May 16th, 2020, if I have the date correct. $15 million came to this school district from the federal government under what's called ESSER funds. That's one of four times that you will receive funds. You've already, this was the 15th or the 16th, by the way, that was your third dump of the pot in your lap. You got one more coming. So what I'm going to say to you, as I look at 15 million, I've seen that number in DPI, and I multiply it by four. Maybe I'll be high, maybe I'll be low, but somewhere in the vicinity of $60 million. Now, you had funds in the previous year also. I have no idea how much that was. I start with this, because I'm very concerned when I look at data that I've got here from the DPI. And what I see here is Appleton Area School District, even though the standards have dropped in grading and achievement, the scoring system back in 2012, 2013, compared to where we're at today, it shows basically no improvement. In fact, that's a scorecard score I'm referring to. And on the graduation rate, Appleton dropped $130 million for bricks and mortar. At the same time, academic standards are not only dropping recent years, that has been a trend for a long time. That concerns me. Some of you have been in business. Some of you have had management positions in business. Every one of you that's held those positions with this set of data in front of you would say, change. Change. I don't see change in the curriculum and academic area. That concerns me. And it should concern everybody in this community. When I look at the, what they call the scale, the rubric for determining what grade a student's going to get. When I went to school, yep, a few years ago, 36 seconds, I would put, I would say this, reading, writing, and arithmetic, our students, based on what I've read, in most cases at the eighth grade level, would surpass those academic achievements of many high school graduates. In fact, when we look at the achievement side, I got a few seconds there to go. I'm just going to say you need to choose wisely. And I think change is needed, and it needs to come back to the curriculum side, not bricks and mortar. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have the ESSER dollars on the agenda tonight, but I would just ask for clarification on the total amount of ESSER dollars that we have received.
We received 1.5 million in May of 2020, and those dollars were spent on one-to-one devices. We received an additional, I'll say, three and a half to four million in ESSER $2. We received 15 million in ESSER $3. And those are all the dollars that was, so the biggest piece was ESSER 3, which is $15 million. And so approximately $19 million is what we have to spend. Spent about $7 million this year. We have $12 million left to spend over the next two years. So we have to spend those dollars by the end of September of 2024. And so that's, those are the dollars. So it's something that we've shared. 19 total. 15 million being the largest, that was approved. And that was part, ESSER 3 is what we refer to that as, as part of the federal stimulus dollar.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone else who is present who would like to address the Board? Okay, I don't see anyone else. So then I will close public input. And we do not have a Board Development topic tonight. So I will move to item six on the agenda, Information for Board Decision Preparation. And we have a number of folks we're going to hear from. First, Business Services Update, and Holly Burr, Executive Director of Finance, will speak to us. So Holly, are you with us on camera?
I am here, Kay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Well done.
So Business Services has three items for consideration tonight. The first is a grant to the district. And the second is Accounts Payable Check Register for the month of June. Those two will be asked to approve as part of Superintendent Harchus' Consent Agenda. And the third is the Authorized Depository. This is an annual requirement of the state for the Board to authorize what financial institutions it intends to work with. I am recommending the same list as the previous year. You will be asked to approve this later under Board Business. Questions?
I don't see any from the boardroom. So thank you, Holly. The next would be School Student Services Update, and Steve Harrison, you're going to do that.
Thank you. So School Services, Student Services has four items for your consideration this evening. All four of these items were presented to you during our previous board meeting. These include the approval of the 2022-23 Annual Notice of Academic Standards, the Library and Media Standards, the ELE Materials Update, as well as the AP Biology Materials Update. And it's the recommendation for these to be approved this evening as part of the overall consent agenda. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve. And the School Services Policy Update, who's doing that? Oh, thank you. Are you there?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about one of the updates that we did for the Student Services Policy for 411.1 and 411.2. That's the student harassment, as well as the student nondiscrimination policy for procedures. We actually haven't changed any of the wording. We're maintaining these policies. However, the one change is because Polly is no longer in the district. I'll be stepping in the role as being the point person when this information is sent to the district. I'll be part of the team that will be looking into these.
Are there any questions for Mike? Okay. I don't see any. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And then Personnel Services Update, Julie King.
Yes, good evening. So for Personnel Services, we have updates on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda items. It would be eight I through K, which would consist of 16 new educator hires for the upcoming school year. One is a rehired temporary employee. I know the Board likes to know about those, as well as one other returning employee. With these recommendations, we will have 126 educators hired for the upcoming school year and a little over 40 vacancies remaining to fill at this time. In addition, there are seven educator resignations. We continue to monitor our educator resignations, as well as our other employee groups. These resignations consist of three relocations, two for family reasons, one who accepted an administrative role in another district, and one who accepted employment with the surrounding district. In addition, Item J is an administrative hire, which is Jeannie Wall, is recommended for the Berry Principalship Position coming from Washington Middle School in Green Bay. In addition, there is an item for information under 11A, and that's in regards to an administrative transfer for Jackie Smedberg, who is previously the Associate Principal at East to the principal position at East. At this time, is, are there any questions?
Julie, this is Chris. I have one question. One of the new hires, it says the person will receive the Bachelor of Science. Does that mean that prior to the start of the school year, that person will be, will have that completed?
Could you please tell me which, which name you're looking under?
Haley Peterson.
Yes, so, so unique circumstance. So she's student teaching first semester and would be hired second semester. So correct. She doesn't, has not completed her bachelor's degree yet.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't see any other questions.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, then we'll move on to item number seven, the Board's Consent Agenda. And there's just one, one item on that, and that'd be the Board Meeting Minutes from June 27th. Motion to approve? The Consent Agenda for?
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please. Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Peng Tao.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
Kay Eggerd.
Aye.
James Bacon.
Aye.
Okay, then on to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Mr. Harchus.
Good evening. So on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda tonight, we have 11 items, all of which were reported on by administrative team members. And I recommend approval of these items, which are eight A through K.
I'll move approval of eight A through K.
One second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Clara. Kay Eggerd.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
Peng Tao.
Aye.
James Bacon.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
And then on to reports, Mr. Harchus.
Yes, so I'll provide the first report under 9A, which is a final review of our potential referendum. So on July 20th of 2019, just over three years ago, you held a board work session to discuss challenges our district was facing with overcrowded schools and aging buildings, all of our schools and facilities. And at that time, we were looking at many different possibilities for resolving the situation, these challenges. And ultimately, a decision was made that we would go forward with putting together a large committee. And that's where we started. So we started in 2019. So I'm going to ask Clara if she can bring up a PowerPoint at this time. And I'm just going to share with you a timeline and then be available to answer any questions for you. And essentially, this is our last meeting to answer questions prior to when we're going to ask you to vote next meeting on August 8th. So I want to take as much time as you need tonight to answer any questions that you have. So as you look at the potential referendum, it would be for a November 8th election. I just want to quickly take you through this timeline. So again, in 2016, the district was concerned about growth on the north side of the district. And so at that time, asked Hoffman Planning, Design, and Construction to do a capacity study on our schools on the north part of our district, ultimately decided to do a capacity study on all of our schools. And what was found out at that time is that many of our schools were significantly overcapacity. Biggest concern being our oldest middle schools in Kaleidoscope in Wilson, our three high schools, Huntley as the school that has the largest growth area. So those are those schools that we're, for the most part, concerned about. But we also had overcrowding at other elementary schools as well. And so in the spring of 2019, we spent some time with all of our building administrators, our principals. And we do annually work with principals and facility staff to walk all of our buildings to talk about what projects do they need to be managed over the next year. We have $2.5 million every year to spend on those capital projects. Unfortunately, that money doesn't go very far when we have 30 buildings roughly. And we have to put in new boilers, new roofs, windows, parking lots, playgrounds. The, the money doesn't go very far when we want to start looking at adding STEM spaces at each of our schools. We'll want to look at perhaps updating some of our spaces to be more current with the way we're teaching at this time. Also, just simply, like an old house, when you have old buildings, we need to constantly be looking at updates and renovations. And so that's what we're looking at. But we asked our principals to prioritize projects. So we asked them to prioritize two projects at their schools. And we started with that. So that was in 2019 in the spring. And then, like I said, in the summer of 2019, we came together as a board, and the Board approved putting together a large committee. And so that committee met through the fall of 2019. It was called the Future Needs Advisory Committee. It was made up of community members, parents, students, and staff across all of our buildings. So it was about 70 individuals. And administratively, we laid out the challenges we had in our district with facilities, and they came up with solutions. One part that was really important to them was that we have equity. They wanted to ensure that we have equity across all of our students and all of our buildings. So they wanted to make sure that every student was positively impacted if we were going to go to referendum. And the other outcome is that they said, we need to go to referendum. So we took that information in December of 2019 and brought it to the Board at that time, and also the leadership team. And so over 2019, December, into 2020, and January and February, the Board met several times, the leadership team met several times to try to kind of narrow those focuses. And we came up with several different projects that we felt were necessary. And then the pandemic struck in March of 2020, and we paused for a year and a half. So for a year and a half, we didn't do anything with a potential referendum or even looking at our facilities challenges. But last fall, in September of 2021, the Board, we met again with the leadership team. And the suggestion was that we go back out to this committee, this Future Needs Advisory Committee, have them meet again and find out if they felt, still felt that these were priorities for our district. So we did that. We met with the Future Needs Advisory Committee, and they said the urgency is even greater, as our schools are all now two years older than they were in the fall of 2019. So we wanted to get more input, and then we wanted to get some feedback on other ideas. And so we brought together some focus groups in January of 2022. And to those focus groups, we brought what we were planning, and then we brought questions for them to help us think about. One of those was adding staffing at kindergarten, first and second grade levels. So in the fall of 2020, when we were looking at bringing students back in person and into that 2020, 2021 school year, one of the things that we did is we lowered class sizes, so that we could keep students safely distanced. And so what happened is the teachers in those schools, our elementary schools, and our principals said, we're really be able to make significant gains in literacy by having smaller class sizes. So we brought that to these focus groups this past January and said, here's what we're thinking about adding to the referendum. There's a cost, obviously. But what we would like to do is staff our kindergarten, first, and second grade at 20 students per teacher, rather than 25 per teacher. And that was received very positively by those focus groups. We also brought this idea of staffing for STEM rooms. So we hadn't gotten far enough along in our planning to look at our STEM spaces that we want to have at each of our elementary schools, and then also our middle schools. And a decision was made that we do want to move forward with STEM staffing, like we do with art. So very similar to how art, students attend one day a week, or perhaps five days in a month. We want to do that with STEM. So that's what we decided to add to the referendum. At that point, we were ready to ask the community what they thought. And so we sent out surveys to 44,000 households in our community. We got all of that information back, the results of those surveys, reported to the Board in June. And so we had some lingering questions about, would we want to consolidate any schools? We decided we didn't want to do that. We want to change any boundaries. We decided we wouldn't change any boundaries. Other than, if we build a new elementary school, Huntley boundaries would change to accommodate students moving to the new school. Other than that, we wouldn't change any boundaries. And then we looked at, do we want to have students attend a different middle school? And decided that we did not want to. So we've, we've answered all of those questions, which means we're ready to think about what we want to ask our community for. And it's what we asked in the survey. So if you could move to the next slide, Clara. The first question we would like to ask would be specific to facilities, STEM in sixth grade moving to the middle school. So it's a capital referendum question. And this is very much a draft. We are working with Quarles and Brady, their legal firm that we will work with to get specific wording on the question. But we, we tentatively think it will read something like this. Shall the Appleton Area School District, Outagame, Kellymet, and Winnebago Counties, Wisconsin, be authorized to issue pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin Statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $129,800,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of adding STEM classrooms at elementary, middle schools, constructing additions at middle schools to create capacity for sixth-grade students, constructing a new elementary school, updating science and general education classrooms, renovating spaces to improve safety and security, and constructing additional space to meet high school operational needs. That's the way the question would read. But the specifics of that are on this next slide, where you can see, number one, we want to remodel space made available when sixth grade- where you can see, number one, we want to remodel space made available when sixth grade moves to the middle school, so that we can add STEM labs at the elementary level. That would be thirteen million of that one hundred and twenty-nine point eight million dollars. The next one would be add middle school capacity to accommodate sixth graders and update STEM areas. And again, we've wanted to move sixth grade to the middle school for twenty-seven years, since North High School was open. Prior to that, we had junior highs, and we moved ninth grade out of the junior highs into the high schools when space was created by adding a third high school. But we never moved sixth grade into the middle school. We had just challenges with facilities even twenty-seven years ago. But we know that academically, socially, and emotionally, sixth graders function better at a middle school model with seventh and eighth graders than they do with four-year-olds and five-year-olds in our elementary schools. So it's something we've wanted to do for a long time. So that's what number two is doing there. It's adding capacity, it's upgrading STEM areas, it's also doing some upgrades and renovations to Wilson and Kaleidoscope, our two oldest middle schools. Both of those were built in nineteen twenty-five. The third piece here is building a new elementary school for thirty-six million dollars, and then the last piece is building additions at our three high schools for thirty-three point eight million dollars. And Clara, if you could click one more time, you'll see these numbers here came from the survey in our community. So that first question, we asked the four questions separately, so we would know if our community supported these four individual pieces. They would all go together as one question on the referendum. But you can see there that seventy-two percent of the responses responded, yes, they would vote for, they would support that sixth grade moving out in the STEM spaces being added for renovations at the elementary school. Sixty-nine percent said yes to adding middle school capacity to accommodate sixth grade and then adding those STEM areas. Sixty-five percent said yes to building a new elementary school, and sixty-three percent to building additions at our three high schools. So those would all come together in one question. The second question that we would ask is an operational referendum question. Again, this is in draft form. Shall the Appleton Area School District, Outagamee, Kellymet, and Winnebago Counties, Wisconsin be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in Section one twenty-one point nine one, Wisconsin Statutes, for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, and thereafter by five million dollars for recurring purposes? Staffing to reduce class size in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, staffing of STEM classes at the elementary and middle level, and ongoing school building, maintenance, cleaning, and utility costs. The next slide gives the specifics. And so the staffing to reduce K-two class sizes, that would be two point two million dollars annually. Staffing of STEM labs would be one point two million dollars annually, both at the elementary and middle level, and then staffing and operating new spaces, one point six million dollars. So that's, again, utilities, the cleaning and the maintenance at the new school, and all the spaces that we would be adding. So that adds together to be the five million dollars. Now, it's a little bit, we'll ask the question, but we wouldn't need five million in twenty-three, twenty-four, because we won't have added these spaces. So really, it's probably more like three million in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, maybe getting closer to five million. Five million may not be needed until the third year after that referendum. But we asked the question, gives us the authority for five million above the revenue limit. If you click one more time, you'll see the percentages. These were very, very positive in the community. So seventy-three percent of responses said yes to reducing class sizes K-one, two, seventy-two percent to adding STEM, and seventy percent to the operating cost of the new spaces. So these three would all be put together in the question that I previously had read. And again, very, very positive support from our community survey. Community survey, we went out to forty-four thousand households. We had, I think it was approximately fifty-five hundred responses, much higher than we would need for this data to be statistically relevant. And so it's a strong support from the community. So again, want to be able to answer any questions that may linger yet. We've been talking about this for three years, and we would bring this back then for your approval at the next meeting. So questions?
I have one. So Quarles and Brady would provide input and guidance on actually, I mean, legally, how you have to ask these questions?
Correct.
So my question is, with the question number two, and, I mean, we need to, we want to be clear enough with the public of how we're going to spend the money, and yet it's ongoing. And so is there language that can allow some flexibility that, you know, to make sure that three years from now, I'm not sure if I can say it right. I mean, do, well, we're not going to say within this five million, I mean, it's going to be five million for these purposes?
Correct.
But how, how much within each, for each of these purposes, it might shift a little bit? Or not, you know?
Yes. And it, we give a number that's based on the average cost of an educator. So we may end up with, for example, the STEM staffing is thirteen teachers. So we take thirteen times the average cost of a teacher, of an educator, and it's eighty-six thousand dollars last year. So that's how we calculate. The reality is, we may have thirteen people that we hire for these positions that are maybe lower on our pay framework. They may end up being higher on our pay framework. Ultimately, they will average out. The same for the reduction of class sizes. So these are based on the average cost last year of an educator. So that's the best we can do. We have pretty solid numbers on the square footage we would be adding, and what we can expect for utility costs, what we can expect for maintenance costs, what we can expect for cleaning. So those numbers are pretty good. Now, those do, obviously, they are impacted by inflation. And so that's something we're always faced with when we go to referendum, is we, we go for dollars that are based on this year's. And like everything else, we're hoping that we see revenue increases from the state through revenue limit increase, thus we can afford any inflationary increases. So yes, this is for this year's dollars, and that's our best estimate. So I don't know if that answers your question. One of the things we are very, very careful about is, when a referendum is passed, when we go to the community and ask four dollars for a specific purpose, we spend those dollars on that purpose. And so, for example, in two thousand fourteen, we went to referendum for five million dollars in operating, and it's for three point five million dollars to go to classroom technology, and one point five million dollars to capital projects. We spend three point five million dollars on classroom technology. We are very, very particular about that. That's what we asked our community for. That's what we spend those dollars on. And some of those dollars do change a little bit, because cost of technology, some things go up and some go down. So the really nice thing is, we were able to, originally, we went to referendum expecting in two thousand fourteen only to be able to afford Chromebooks for ninth through twelfth graders, but the cost of Chromebooks have come down considerably. So we were able to add those for seventh and eighth graders. And so those are some flexibility we have, because it falls within classroom technology, but we keep it in classroom technology. And I can tell you, across the district, a lot of people want to get their hands on some of those dollars, and we don't allow it. That's what we ask taxpayers for. That's what we spend those dollars on. The one point five million dollars for capital projects, you know, we're looking at, a roof might be thirty percent more expensive now than it was last year. It might be seventy percent more expensive than it was in two thousand fourteen, but that's for us to manage. Those are the dollars we asked for at that time, and that's what we stick with.
The basis for my questions, we received a question on, you know, we want all students in the district to benefit from efforts that we're trying to, through referendum dollars. And so it got a little bit into the weighted student funding.
Okay.
And so if you have a school with higher needs, or a student population with higher needs, would there be a way to direct more resources to that? And that's what I was, but if we are going to use the money for reducing class size, that's what it needs to be.
That's what it needs to be.
So, and I don't know if, that was it. That was just in the back of my mind. I mean, how do you, because the money is ongoing, and, you know, for the future, is there a way that you build flexibility in, or if then, because of this, you can free up other dollars that could be used in another way? So that was my long-winded way of wondering about that.
No, we would be very particular about spending these dollars as they were, as we promised the community. And so we will spend, after the meeting on August eighth, if it's, if the two questions are approved by the board that are going to referendum, we'll spend between that time and November eighth informing the community, just making sure that they're very clear on what it is we're asking for, and how those dollars will be spent. And then we stick with that in perpetuity. That's how those dollars will be spent. Yes?
Greg, I'm going to ask if Clara could go back to the second question. Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, I couldn't remember, nope, the one that you were just at, Clara, that one. How you, how it was going to be specified, because, okay, for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Could you see that there would be, you know, you gave us an explanation before, is that something that could be information more to the public, so that they would see that, you know, the school isn't even built in here, they're asking for five million dollars? How would that be presented to make sure that that's understood, that that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the five million until, A, the school is built, and B, all the STEM teachers are in place and things?
Absolutely can share that in presentations that we give. And it also, you know, the number is impacted. We will talk about thirty-nine dollars on a hundred thousand dollars of property, and that's the number that we will explain this will cost. The reality will be that as new construction gets added to our property value across our district, that number actually comes down. So again, we go with the, kind of the highest dollar amount, and just like this, we will, we want to be, you know, very transparent. Five million dollars is the authority we're asking for to go above the revenue limit. We won't need that five million dollars in the first couple of years, because you're right, we haven't built the schools. There's no cleaning cost, there's no utilities. And so we'll have, you know, phase into that. But absolutely, we can share that with our community.
I'm very pleased we're, we're able to take this to the, to this question, the two questions to the community. I'm looking forward to the conversation around them. We know we have an overcrowding problem on the northeast side of town, and we have an answer to that with the new elementary. We believe that we can improve learning environment in our middle schools and the culture for learning there by adding a third grade, and we have evidence of that. So we're acting on that. Society has moved heavily in the, in the direction of technology, so we're moving STEM back to earlier grades. Now, we're going to have first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders in STEM labs with trained teachers. We know we need to improve our learning in general. That was alluded to in the, in the public input. So we're increasing, reducing class size for the first three grades. We, that's based on solid evidence that if you learn to read better at an earlier age, and if you understand math better at an earlier age, it's going to help you throughout your entire career. So I think we have a wonderful conversation waiting for us with our community, and I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
So Greg, before you mentioned working with Quarles and Brady, are you still working with them on this, or would this be the question that we would see?
Still working with them.
So there might be some additional clarifications that they would suggest then?
Correct. They may.
Thank you.
And on that note, we'll know that by the next board meeting then is when that will all be finalized with them. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it will come as a resolution. So it'll be very formal legalized document. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see, back to my agenda. Business Services Report. So Holly, again, is, Holly, we're calling you again, please.
Good evening again, everyone. I just wanted to give a brief update on our ending twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. We are not entirely closed yet. We're still receiving in few revenue items and doing the last of the check runs. So these numbers are preliminary, but I did just want to give you a quick update on our Fund ten and twenty-seven, which are two largest operational funds or instructional funds. Fund ten, of course, is the general, where, you know, the vast majority of our revenues and expenses lie, and Fund twenty-seven is for special ed. These are usually presented together because Fund ten, or Fund twenty-seven, excuse me, ends up short, and there is a transfer from Fund ten to twenty-seven. So these are generally presented together. So those of you who are not used to the financials yet, you'll oftentimes see these presented as one number. Our original budgets for these two combined funds for twenty-one, twenty-two was basically a break even with a very slight projected negative for the year. We are now projecting the end of the year to end with a positive approximately five point five million. That would go to the fund balance. Now, this positive ending is due to several factors. Additional revenues for both Medicaid filing as well as open enrollment. Coming out of the pandemic last year, we were very unclear at the end of twenty, 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 twenty-one fiscal year, what our open enrollment would look like. And we were very conservative that we would basically go back to pre-pandemic levels. Leading, so being that conservative, that led to additional revenues for the open enrollment students, and also less expenses. So basically, we had over budgeted on one side and under on the other, but to the positive on, on both, open enrollment in and open enrollment out. There was also less expenses in the special ed than what we had originally budgeted. And lastly, a large category was salary and benefits. We tend to budget for staffing at one hundred percent here for the district, and we saw savings due to unfilled positions and less cost for substitutes. As you recall, last winter, many of the increased absences due to COVID were covered by in-house staff, administrators, and not, non-teaching instructors were filling a lot of those substitute positions. And so because of that, we didn't have the increase in substitute costs. The projected increase to Fund ten fund balance of the The projected increase to fund ten fund balance of the five point five million does include a transfer of one point five million. To our fund forty six capital projects fund. This fund was started about four and a half years ago. And is so it will be available. There's a five-year wait out period. That will be completed this fall. So at that point, we could use these monies for capital improvements then. Questions?
The increase in fund balance is very good news.
Yes, Jim, that is going to definitely help us moving into our next year, our second year in a row. Of zero increases to our revenue base is going is going to be a little bit more challenging. So having this reserve is going to definitely help with that.
Thank you, Holly. I don't see any other questions or comments from board members. So thank you.
Okay, then Kay, I believe I also have the next item, which is the district health insurance update, the employee health insurance. We don't have a lot to update there, and I would welcome Julie to chime in if if she has anything that I do not. But basically, we continue to meet with our consultants on a regular basis. And researching our two options for the employee insurance of a new fully funded insurance company. Or moving to self-funding. We anticipate having more information mid to late August. Julie, you have anything else you can add?
And I think the only piece that I would add is one of the key pieces of information will be. The stop-loss coverage in determining as well as the analysis of the complaints. Or I'm sorry, of the claims for health insurance. So those two key pieces of information, we are currently through our consultants out for an RFP. On the stop-loss and expect that back about mid-August. In which all these pieces would come together to really have a picture to analyze which path would be the best moving forward.
Okay, any time. Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Health insurance, excuse me, health insurance is a big cost for us. I I think it's twenty two or twenty three million dollars per year. So I'm I'm interested in. The direction we're gonna take and how it affects our costs. So any cost data that you might have at that point would be of interest to me. I get I get questions about what do you guys do into control costs? And. One of my best answers is wellness. I I think we have opportunities in wellness to bring down our our health health insurance costs. So I I'm just interested in data on that.
Okay, I don't see anything else from board members. So thank you for that update. Moved then to School Services Report, and I believe back to Steve Harrison.
Yeah, so School Services has two separate items of information for you this evening. The first one is with respect to English Language Arts Grade eleven material adoptions. And so I do have Kelly Leopold, who is our Secondary Director of Social Studies ELA and World Languages, as well as Library and Media. Joining us this evening to share with us various pieces of information relating to this item of information. So I'm gonna switch spots here with Claire in a moment so I can call up on the screen information that Kelly will walk us through.
Good evening, everyone. The eleventh grade ELA teacher teachers came to me. Looking to engage their students further. And they know that a lot of the fall class novels that they read out loud, as well as the literary circles. You know, are a few of the different ways and they they're looking at the approved list and looking at what what is going to interest our students. And so a discussion came about around some plays. Plays do a couple of things. Yes, they they can be a lower lexile. And some of our readers are reading below their grade level. It in middle school and high school levels. But for the most part, the plays do fall within those lexiles. And so they looked at, we had a work group. That from all three high schools that came together and read ten different plays. And had courageous conversations. They use the pause and reflect protocol. And again, wanted high interest levels for our students and also wanted our students to see themselves and have that opportunity. To see a little bit of perhaps of their culture and their interests within what they're reading. And so they came forward with two recommendations, Radium Girls and She Kills Monsters. And Steve is pulling up some further information for you around those. So these books will be. Or could be upon approval would be used with all of the ELA eleven, the eleventh grade options. Being an AP course, an advanced course, and just the literature, American literature. So. The, as I was mentioning, they came together wanting our students to be engaged and looking for modern plays. Looking for new ideas based on the conversations and feedback they were getting from the students. Students tend to be a little more reserved in class when being asked to read aloud. And when it's a play and there's dialogue. It's it it's a. A good way for them to continue their speaking practice, but less embarrassing, I guess, if you will, when they're when they're playing a role. And so the the, again, the feedback from the students when the teachers asked them was was very high on doing that. I myself, when I was in the classroom, taught the French sixth class with a play, The Three Musketeers. And that had to be one of the best units we did. They the sound effects, the the just the thrill of seeing them in class, really embracing the story. And I think that's what they're looking for. So it's that lower risk of public speaking. They're shorter in length. I I don't know if you had a chance to to read them or look at them when they were out on display, but much shorter than most of our novels. Again, you know, lower risk, they they they're not as cumbersome as as the other novels sometimes that we ask our students to read. And. They do, the plays do require more inferencing, and we're looking for our students to do more of that. So as we prepare them for both both further education and standardized tests. Doing that, that inferencing is very important. So that's around our why. The what are the skills? So they're becoming analytical readers of text, right? Different periods of time, Radium Girls. For the early early twentieth century, and She Kills Monsters is is modern. Okay, this is current. Society comprehends our, excuse me, comprehending text through a variety of reading strategies. So again, you know, we look at informative text, we look at nonfiction, we look at fiction, and this is just another style of text for them. Identifying the key details. So they're still good, just like they would with any other reading. They're gonna be looking at the main idea and character development and key details. How how they can relate to it, right? How they can retell and summarize. That's summarizing is a skill we want all of our students to graduate high school with that that strong skill and application. Analyzing the point of view, really, really critical in both of these. Again, and I I don't want to tell, I mean, say too much about the stories, but She Kills Monsters. A young lady who loses, she's a high school aged girl. She loses her parents and her younger sister in a car accident. And she finds. A don't wanna a notebook. She stumbles upon her younger sister's notebook and finds herself. Catapulted into a journey of discovery and action-packed adventure, learning a lot about her sister that she didn't even know. So that point of view is really important. And with Radium Girls, many of you maybe have read the full novel or seen the movie. But talking about young women in New Jersey, Connecticut, and Illinois in the nineteen twenties that were painting the dials on clocks with radium. On with the, I knew I was gonna say that wrong, with the. Luminous watches, right? Using the the radium and how they. Many of them acquired diseases and illnesses and passed away and then their fight with the company. So point of view is crucial with this, as well as, like I said, the character development. Analyzing the writer's use of rhetorical devices with the impact of the message and writing reflections. The students will further reflect and review what they have, what they have read. So how again? They will be. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to the second how. The first how is the public input. We solicited public input. For for thirty business days. And Steve is pulling that summary up for you to look at. We didn't receive a lot of responses. We had one supportive response, zero unsupportive. And the the supportive was is a high school ELA teacher in our area, but not in our school district. With a master's degree in reading, and she gave her support for our selection of these materials. Radium Girl seems to promote awareness of an historical issue. And the content seems like it would prompt quality discussion, and I would agree with that. So that was nice. And then the other. Is a light of slightly lower lexile that she's referring to, and She Kills Monsters is not a concern as they will be reading other texts. So this is, you know, the reason I'm bringing it forward to you is there is interest to do this as a full class. But there are other teachers that will be using these as choice, but they will continue to use the other. Reading materials that they've used previously that will be at that level. And then the second how I had started to say, how will they the teachers assess what they're learning with these plays? The same as they would with any of the other novels that they read, fiction, nonfiction, and informative text. So they'll be reading, as I mentioned, for key details, key ideas and details, excuse me. Making logical inferences, developing questions for deeper understanding and summarizing. Analyzing the development of the themes, reading for craft and structure. Determining the meaning of words and phrases that, again, are used in the dialogue. Speaking, posing and engaging questions. They're, you know, when they do lit circles, they really have in-depth and engaging conversations. And I and I get that the teachers were really looking forward to those. That was the reason they came forward with them. And then writing knowledge of language and style, and finally, the the language, the conventions of the of the English language. So it'll be just as done with other pieces of literature.
Thank you, Kelly. And so this is an item of information for this evening, which it will return to as an item for consideration during your August eighth board meeting. And so at this time, certainly open it up to you for any questions you may have for Kelly.
Kelly, just one question. And I'm familiar with both pieces, and I I applaud you for adding, you know, for the for those who came forward and suggested adding the plays to. To the curriculum because I it offers much to students. I'm just, there may be some students for whom, you know, due to their current circumstances and their family's circumstances. Some of the information might be sensitive, you know, I I'm thinking of particularly the one. Dealing with the death of the family. And so I'm just making sure, and I know this is has been done, that families would continue to receive the information ahead of schedule. So that they might be able to preview it. And then if they view this as material that at this point in their lives is not. Maybe just a little bit too sensitive that they would have an opportunity to opt out and move into a piece that would encourage them to. Attain the same skills, but using a different material that might not be as sensitive.
Thank you, Chris. Absolutely. So part of I mentioned the pause and reflect protocol. As upon approval, our PLCs, both at our sites and district-wide, that'll be part of their discussion. How will they preview these to their students, whether it be the class read or choice, student choice? That will be something that is addressed within their PLC discussion so that it can be communicated both to the students and to the families. That is a practice that they intend to use moving forward, so.
Thank you. And then that would be standardized across the district. All right. Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. And so we have another item of information for you this evening as part of our School Services Report. So I'm joined by Dr. Carrie Willer, who is our Elementary Director of English Language Arts and Social Studies. And she will be providing an item for you with respect to. Increasing consistency among universal materials we already have for grades three through six. But what this item would do is ensure that we have consistency in additions that are currently of various years throughout our district. So with that, I'm going to share the screen here. And then Carrie, I will call up for you the items that support our discussion.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me join you tonight, just as my colleague sat here before me just a few minutes ago with an item for your consideration at the secondary level. I bring one forward to you at the elementary level. As Steve had indicated, this is not a different resource, but actually what we're looking to do is buy a total of five books. Per elementary school so that all of our elementary schools would have the same addition. Currently, we have forty one copies of these books within our elementary schools. But two thirds of our elementary schools are using additions from two thousand and four to two thousand and nine. So they are very dated. And that becomes problematic when you think of scope and sequence, you think of how students are interacting with these resources. And so what we are looking to do is purchase one set, total of five books, so that every elementary school has the most up-to-date universal component. And what Steve has called up on the screen here just gives you a little bit of background on this resource. This would be used with our third through sixth grade as part of their language study. It's called Words Their Way. It would include a core text, which looks like this. This is the phonics and vocabulary spelling instruction book. And then it would also include four companion sets, which would be derivational relation spellers. It would include alphabetic spellers. Syllables and affix spellers and also word pattern spellers. So it's part of, again, the language study program that we use at the intermediate level. This material resource would not only provide consistency that we're striving for across our sites. But it would also help teachers better differentiate the needs of our students because of the variety of texts that it offers. We know that not all students have the same needs when it comes to language study. This would assist them. The other piece is that with the additional update of the resource, it comes with some family practice and some opportunities for families that may be looking to. Support their child or work with their child within the area of language study. As well as a new digital sorting activity for students, along with teacher training videos to talk about how do you use these resources? How can we grow our language skills and help better support our readers, particularly at third through sixth grade? Some of the new features within these particular books include a digital component, which is an online tool. That will automatically score a qualitative spelling inventory to help teachers target. that will automatically score a qualitative spelling inventory to help teachers target where to start instruction for our students and our learners. It's a very quick and easy administer for the spelling inventory within the classroom. It's familiar and the teachers are used to this resource now. Again, this is not a new resource. And then there's also hundreds of reproducible word sorts. We did have this item out for public review. And as Steve calls up the second document, you'll see that we did receive a total of six responses from individuals who had shared some feedback with us. Of the six, we had four that were supportive and we had two responders that were a little more unsupportive. The comment or quote that came forward with their resource was that Words Their Way is a great program and supports both readers and writers within the ELA classroom. The program allows teachers to differentiate for their students and provides a clear scope and sequence to follow. It allows students to be hands-on with their learning and incorporates progress monitoring. There was a concern about the word sorts getting lost. Like all instructional resources used in the classroom, students can and lose and will lose items. And we felt that instructional coaches, along with effective practice suggestions from the core text can assist teachers with strategies when this happens. What they're talking about is with the word sorts, there are pictures and little cards. And sometimes the students are working with these, they'll fall off the desk or they'll lose those. The comment that was shared with us, we also had some additional themes that came forward from the six responders. Overall, there's a trust in educators to select materials that meet the needs of our students. There's a desire that we should provide more funding and more material resources for teachers. There's a desire to provide more support for children with dyslexia. There's a desire for more reading classes for struggling readers. There was a desire to support teachers and helping intermediate students that haven't mastered phonics. And there was additional feedback provided that was not related to the words their way programming. So a lot of variation within the response from the six individuals that put forward their sentiments. And then lastly, how will these books be resourceful for grades three through six classroom teachers? Again, this is a familiar resource to them and it provides step-by-step directions and reproducible activities. It's engaging and it's differentiated. There's a lot of different pathways for children based on what they need for their language study. It's current theory and research around language study. And a variety of individual, small group, whole group activities and a variation of progress monitoring tools for teachers to use.
Thank you, Carrie. And so again, this is an item of information this evening. Be coming back to you at our August 8th board meeting for your approval of a purchase. And at this time, I will open it up to you as board members for any questions you may have for Carrie.
Question, if I receive questions on the effectiveness of phonics. And, and a question is, to what extent are phonics now used in the district and how do we feel about it? Would you comment on that?
You bet. So I'll, I'll jump in here and then Carrie certainly as you were to answer. And so, you know, we, we talked at our previous board meeting about the importance of early literacy. And how reading and writing really do serve as the gateway for future success into upper grade levels. And so you hear a lot within the overall community at large about, you know, for example, such as the reading wars, right? Science of reading with a real heavy emphasis on phonics and then also balanced literacy. And part of what Dr. Willer and I have engaged in with also other administrative members in our district is our own capacity building through CISA six of really shifting the balance, so to speak. And what I mean by that, Jim, is looking at what are those key pieces of phonics that we do see as a district that we need to strengthen within our curriculum and instruction. But also what are those pieces we don't want to lose as part of balanced literacy? So it's not choosing one over the other, but really taking and incorporating the best practices of both and weaving them together. And so as part of your discussion, you may recall as a board that OE 11, so our operational expectation of the instructional program has as an indicator for us that we would have a full program review for each of our content areas every three years. And so the focus of this upcoming school year for the 22, 23 school year is that I, along with Dr. Willer and Ms. Leopold will be leading our overview, our program evaluation of 5K12 literacy. That certainly all of our content areas are important, but we recognize the urgency of looking at our historical data with respect to literacy. Looking at within the various domains of reading, where are we heavy on phonics? So where do we, where are we not? And we see that we need to strengthen both within our material adoptions as well as within our instructional practices. And so that'll be a quite comprehensive review that I will then be sharing with you as part of the progress monitoring of OE 11. Similarly, that will also take place with math and science and where languages and all the content areas. But that will be the predominant focus of our 22, 23 program review. So in short, we are currently examining as far as getting ready for that program review. Where within our materials are we lighter? Where are we heavier? Where do we see gaps in our instruction in terms of phonics? So that as a result of that program review, that would then drive what changes do we need to make within our curriculum? Within the materials coming forward to you and so forth.
When is that review scheduled, Steve?
So the, the dates themselves have not yet been scheduled because to be honest, I have spent the, most of the summer drafting the program review. So looking at, you know, just various program reviews from other districts throughout the country. Also what that looks like at the post-secondary level. And so I'm finalizing that template with our ACNI department in support with student services, knowing that the voices from special education are very important. English language learner voices and so forth. So really starting this school year, I would anticipate no later than October because it really is meant to be a full year comprehensive review. And you may recall as part of our continued school improvement process, it will really be following PDSA. The Plan Do Study Act cycle. So that it's not just the evaluation of our programming for English Language Arts 5K12. But then what steps do we create for ourselves as a district moving forward? And then how will we study not only our student results, but also the actions we have taken as a district in terms of fidelity? So that ultimately as part of that cycle, we need to really answer the question of what do we need to either adopt, adapt or abandon as part of our, our ELA practices, knowing that there certainly is areas for improvement. I'm sorry, Carrie, anything else you'd like to add? Okay.
Yes, a couple of questions. So Carrie, it sounds to me like teachers in grades three through six have been using this up until now. So first, so there, because it is, I don't want to say labor intensive, but I've worked with it and it's, it's, it's a lot. How does this tie in with students in third grade who aren't really at a third grade level?
It's a really great question and it ties to what Jim was talking about when he was talking about phonics. When we talk about phonics, we're looking at those relationships between sounds and letters. My apologies, my mic wasn't on. It's a really good question and it ties to what Jim was saying earlier. When we talk about phonics, we talk about the relationship between sounds and letters. When we talk further beyond that, once students start to read those emergent readers, we start looking at chunks of words. We start seeing patterns of words. We start reading whole words, sentences, paragraphs, and we start to move beyond that. When we have learners who are performing below grade level, they have a variety of needs. There's a breakdown that's happening somewhere along those lines. So to your question, if we have a third grader who is struggling with their word study. We then go back and we look, where is that breakdown happening? Are they having trouble understanding how to blend words? Are they having trouble how to segment words? Are they having trouble, maybe they need a little bit more work with phonemes? That's understanding those sounds that match those letters. This particular resource is able to do that because there is a volume that they look at that would focus on alphabetic letters that would probably take them back there. And with the new addition, there are assessments that teachers can use to help them pinpoint where is that struggle happening? And how can we work beyond that? And I think that's the important piece of that.
Thank you. I was just wondering to make sure that they weren't having to go right back to second grade and, you know, get those materials. I'm glad to hear that it covers that. Thank you.
Key piece of this adoption is really to ensure that we're not progressing by chance, but instead by design. So as Carrie mentioned before, we want to ensure that all the additions of Words Their Way for grades three through six by design are all the same copyrights. We're not leaving it to chance as far as which school the student attends. As far as what then addition of materials they have available to them as well as for our teachers.
Just out of curiosity, this might be for you, Steve, when we look at the feedback summary that you all shared. It, there's one comment that I believe in the, in the first box, it's like written verbatim, but then the others are just themes. So I'm assuming the themes also came from people's comments. So is this comment just one of the more comprehensive ones that you chose to kind of put in that way? And then just shared the rest of the themes? Is that how this information and that document's being presented?
Not necessarily. So we had six responders, four of which were supportive. The supportive comments, there are four of them, which are listed on the, in the first box. That's a synopsis of what those four individuals had said to support it. There were two additional individuals who are not supportive. Their concerns lied with the word sorts getting lost. In addition to a multitude of other comments that came forward that you see in that pink frame down below.
Okay, so where it says comment, it really is like a synopsis of all the comments at the top part. Two, not a single comment that was someone singularly wrote.
Not a quote, correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
And part of that, James, too, is depending upon how much feedback we get. I caution Dr. Willer against using the word themes because to really say you have themes from six responses wouldn't necessarily be the accurate.
And that's fair. And I feel like this time it's, we have a few more than we sometimes do. And it seems like a third and two thirds were different. So I just want to make sure I was interpreting how that was organized. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, this will then vote on these materials will be at the next board meeting. So thank you for, for providing the information at this time. We will now move to board business. 10A is the authorization of depository resolution. Amy, Holly Burr indicated described that this is no change from previous years. So, sir, a motion to approve our authorized deposit, the authorized depository resolution for this school year. So, second. Thank you, Ping. Thank you, Chris. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call please, Clara. Deb Truman.
Aye.
James Bacon.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Pang Tao.
Aye.
Kay Egger.
Aye. Okay, and then 10B, this would be our OE two superintendent succession monitoring report that the, the board heard about during the work session. Is there a motion to approve or accept the superintendent, the monitoring report on OE two?
I will, that we accept the superintendent monitoring port of OE two.
And then just for clarification, Clara, do you want that to say that in compliance, is that what you were saying? Okay, so could I make a, is that, do you want some clarification on that motion? Yes. Perfect. Okay. Good. All right. Any other discussion or clarification? Okay, see none, then roll call please.
Pang Tao.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
James Bacon.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
Kay Egger.
Aye. Okay, and then OE three, treatment of community stakeholders monitoring report.
Or give it a try. I will make motion to accept OE three monitoring report with the exceptions as noted.
So the motion is to accept report compliant with the exceptions noted is what, okay, wonderful. Any other questions or discussion? See none, roll call please.
Kay Egger.
Aye.
Deb Truman.
Aye.
Chris Sauter.
Aye.
Jim Bowman.
Aye.
James Bacon.
Aye.
Pang Tao.
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move on to item 10D. And this is, this is really an item of information. And I'm not sure if board members had a chance to look at this, but we are, this relates to a new policy that we are wanting to adopt or working on. And, and so the first draft was included in the information for tonight. As many will recall, the pandemic in March of 2020, when the forced closure of school buildings and then various mandates that followed. We needed a way that we could continue to meet and we depend, so under emergency situations. And we had a, we came up with a policy to describe and to guide our virtual board meetings in emergency situations. Now that the need for virtual meetings and attendance has stabilized. We also feel that there's still value in maintaining some of the expanded access with virtual meetings as well as for board members to attend virtually at times. We do strongly encourage that board members can be physically present for board meetings that they want to participate in. But certainly there are situations that remote participation may be beneficial or necessary. So this policy was developed, or this draft is very much based on WASB draft policy. And so it's, it is long, it's, but we will look to have a discussion of it at the August 8th board meeting and then that would be our first discussion. And then again, at the second board meeting in August, hopefully we can, can pass it. So, or present it for consideration. So if there are, you know, questions ahead of time, you know, please bring them forward or just be ready to. We can talk about it on, on August 8th. So that's our purpose for getting it out there so that you can start to, start to see it. But related to this, I wanted to to just say, you know, something that we did learn through the pandemic and the virtual meetings was at the virtual, excuse me, virtual meetings was at our, I think that we had more participation and the virtual meetings allowed for more access for the public to watch our meetings live stream or, or view them later through YouTube. We are going to continue to live stream the meetings because we think that that is, 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 is good and it's good for the public. But also because of that, an important part of that is to have the technology that we can depend on. So we are going to continue to do all of our meetings down here. Previous to the pandemic, once a month, we would try to do meetings out at the school sites. But if we're going to try to make sure we can live stream. We are concerned about trying to do that in, in school buildings or things where we don't know that we maybe have the technology that we can depend on. So we will continue to do all of our board meetings here at the Leadership Center. But another change, we will not continue to live stream our board work sessions. Those are opportunities, the, the work sessions are not board meetings. You know, the purpose is we may have topics of board development or deeper learning for board members. We never take action at, at board work sessions. We have seen a decline in, significant decline in the number of people viewing any of the board work sessions live or after, you know,
any of the board work sessions live or after, you know, once they're on YouTube. The streaming, any type of streaming does involve staff time. And so we've made a decision that to discontinue the streaming of the board work sessions, we feel like we better use of district resources, that we would not continue the streaming. But that being said, board, all meetings, including the board work sessions or any committee meeting of, that the board may have, is always open to the public and an option that individuals could contact Superintendent Office, Clara, in particular, if there, there's some concern about accessing the information. So that is a change that we have have decided to go with. And so wanted to mention that as we start our meetings for this new school year. But board members would still be able to participate remotely as, as necessary. Yes, Deb?
So to me, it's kind of a balancing as, as the Community Linkage Committee. That was one of the hopes that we had had to get out into the different schools. So there's your balance with live streaming. Do you have any idea of, of a duration for the live streaming versus getting back out into the schools?
So would you, I mean, we, we talked about this a fair amount and we have the perfect solution. But maybe it's just something that we continue to, to track and see what the, what the demand is. You want to weigh in on this, Superintendent?
I, I can't. It's just simply the technology. We would not be able to produce a video of quality that you'd be able to watch on YouTube. And so we did talk a lot about balancing, we think that the community appreciates the ability to watch these meetings on YouTube. And if we were to go out and have a meeting at one of our schools, we wouldn't be able to do that. We just simply can't replicate this technology out at a site. So that's kind of the balance that we have to do. And we felt that it was more important to make sure our community could watch these, these meetings on YouTube than to be at the site, thinking we could find other ways to get out into our schools.
I, I, I hope we can because that was not only just being in the school, but just the board members getting actually into the buildings and seeing, you know, what are you talking about when you're saying you know, classrooms are crowded and different things like that. So I just take it into consideration and see what happens.
And, you know, that's true. And there, I think it would be good that if there are other opportunities for the board members to be out in the, you know, out in the schools. But the technology was a big, a big component of the, of the thought process and the decision. So, go ahead, Chris.
One of the positive for the community, I think, was that we were able to have special programs that addressed, oh, maybe some of the special programs in the individual schools. But would we still have that opportunity through, you know, meeting here? I know it would be probably a little bit more challenging for, you know, to get students in to the setting versus their homeschool community. But would we still have that opportunity then?
We certainly hope to. And like you said, it's, it's more of a challenge to get young students to be able to travel here. But we absolutely want to hear from students. We want to hear from teachers. And that's the really positive part about going out. It's, it's easy for them to come forward with their families to meetings and present or perform at their homeschool, which is always fun for them. But we were committed to trying to bring some type of student staff voice here at the board meetings.
Just as you were talking, I was reminded of one very impactful session that we had, which was during the time when we weren't having people come in. But it was a video that was shared with us from Central High School, which I think was, was, you know, very well done. So perhaps that might be an option, too, of bringing information to us in a different format, but from the people who are in those schools.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else on that topic, then we did not have any consent agenda, I consent agenda items removed for separate consideration. So there are two items of information included in the materials for tonight, administrative transfer, which was Julie King mentioned to us. And then a very small change update to the district complaint procedure. So we're new, future meetings, August 8th is our next work session as well as board meeting. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Well, good night, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Have a good evening.